We are live.
All right, good. Thank you. Welcome, everyone. This is the Isle Palm City Council Public Hearing. Today is Tuesday, December 8, 2020, at approximately 5:45. This is a virtual meeting due to the COVID-19 pandemic. I'd like to call this meeting to order and acknowledge both the press and the public were duly notified of this meeting in accordance with the Freedom of Information Act. We also have a section for public comments. Nobody has signed up for public comments, so we're going to move on. Nicole, can we have a roll call, please?
Absolutely. Councilmember Bell?
Here.
Councilmember Streetman?
Here.
Councilmember Popson?
Here.
Councilmember Pounds?
Here.
Councilmember Smith?
Here.
Councilmember Moy?
Here.
Councilmember Buchanan?
Here.
Councilmember Ward? I see him, but he's on mute. Mayor Carroll?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you very much. All right, moving on. The purpose of this meeting is for two ordinances. They have to have public hearings. The first one is ordinance 2020-10, an amendment to the city zoning ordinance to allow sewer pump stations in the SR1 Single Residential District. I'm going to let our Director of Building, Planting, and Zoning, Douglas Carr, take this and kind of explain it to everyone.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. As you have said already, this first ordinance would affect the zoning code as it relates to pump stations, pump stations for sewer systems in the residential districts on the island. And this ordinance has gone through the Planning Commission. You all would have, you gave first reading to one ordinance. This ordinance has been amended and changed by the Planning Commission, and the way it's being suggested to you here tonight is lift stations would be allowed in single-family residential districts when they are approved by the Board of Zoning Appeals as a special exception. So it would establish that criteria that each one go before the Board of Zoning Appeals. And then, in addition to that hurdle, it creates eight different criteria that the Board of Zoning Appeals would be considering when they look at each one of these requests. And I'll just quickly go through each of those eight criteria. The first is that the facility have a footprint of 1,000 square feet of, 1,000 square feet or less. The second one is that the facility be treated or be equipped with an odor control device that keeps the smells out of the properties that are residentially used. Third would be that all facilities are screened with either an eight-foot-tall privacy fence or a fully enclosed structure. The fourth would be that a vegetative buffer be included, and the ordinance spells out criteria by which that buffer would need to be created, 10 feet in depth, and then there's a number of trees that would need to be provided. Fifth, that all lighting be shielded from residences nearby the lift station. And also be controlled by a switch that would only be switched on when the facility is being worked on at night. So we wouldn't want it to be on, shining through the night when it's not being worked on. Sixth, that backup generators not be located onsite to avoid the cycling on and off when they're exercising and not in use, and that they be brought in only when they're necessary. Seventh, that the maximum height of any component be limited to 12 feet. If there's no enclosure used, or 16 feet if an enclosure is used. And eighth, and this is just kind of a catch-all category, that adequate provisions be made and considered by the Board of Zoning Appeals to ensure that adjacent properties are protected from the adverse impacts of the use, such as noise, vibration, dust, glare, similar. And I would just add that this amendment has been reviewed and recommended by the Planning Commission, which I explained. Additionally, the Water and Sewer Commission staff has been involved with the development of these as it will be impacting their future projects. And I think they're generally agreeable to them. I think they saw them as reasonable and something that they can live with going forward. So that's all I have, Mayor. I guess if we have questions, we could, I don't know if we would do those now or do those during the regular meeting.
Desiree, I think we do questions during council, do we not?
You can have questions during the meeting, during the public hearing, just to get additional clarity from Douglas on the actual ordinance that's presented. But there's also, there will also be an opportunity for council to address and have questions in the next portion of the meeting.
Any questions from council? Philip Pounds?
Yep. Hey, Douglas, can you just get a little more commentary on the additional oversight of BOZA as opposed to that being a staff-level decision?
Yes, that, so this is a, this is a trigger or a tool that is in the city's code already, and the name of that tool is a special exception process. That would require that the property be posted, that an advertisement be run in the local paper, and that generally notices given to the surrounding areas via that notification. And then it will provide a public forum whereby residents who feel like the, and really what the board would, you know, would be most germane for the board to hear is if there is some part of the proposal that is contrary to these eight provisions that the code creates. In theory, if the request complies with all eight, the Board of Zoning Appeals should approve it against those eight. If there is some part of the proposal that doesn't comply with the criteria in the code, then neighbors would be able to make that be known to the board and deny it, or they could modify the application if they needed to. So the other option would be if this were done at a staff level, which is, you know, the Planning Commission talked about that. They decided that, you know, these are things that generally the neighbors would want to hear about and want to be, you know, kind of out in front of that. So that's the reason the Planning Commission, I think, chose to make it a special exception, just a little bit more of a public vetting process for that.
Got it. Well, and I think you and the Planning Commission, I know Chris is on to the water and sewer. I think this is a great amendment to the original pushout that you guys had, so thank you all for working on it.
Very good. Randy Bell?
Quick question, Douglas. So if I understood that, you could conceivably be a single-story house with a 16-foot wall. I mean, you said 12 to 16 feet height limitation?
So 12 feet would be the equipment. You know, if you, I don't know if you visualize these things, but, you know, there is odor control devices. There's kind of a series of pumps, pipes, and wells that get associated with these. So 12 feet would be the, if they do not enclose it with a structure, it would be, the equipment would be limited to 12 feet. The code gives them the option of putting them inside a structure, which most of them are not these days. Most of them are open air, but some of them are. And I don't know really why they choose one method over the other, but if they chose to enclose it in a structure, that structure would be limited to 16 feet in height.
Well, the reason I ask that, you know, a single-story home probably peaks at, you know, somewhere around that. So conceivably, if you had 1,000 square feet of an adjacent property, you know, as yet unnamed, you could have a 16-foot structure next door completely sort of walling off any view or anything. Am I misinterpreting that? That just seems, you know, I mean, back to the question. We don't know where these will go over time, you know, as yet undetermined. And we're going to move it to BOZA, but if they're within the compliance of those items, there's not much a resident could do about it, but I can only imagine, you know, the J.C. Long home sitting there with a 12 to 16-foot structure next to them without much, that, it just, I'm struggling. That's all.
Anyone else? Douglas, I have a question. I think I forgot the exact number of stations, 16, 17 stations, excluding the triangle piece of land at 7th and Palm. Say the property were adjacent to my property, and since Philip on this screen is next to me, next to Philip, does that mean that the land is subtracted from us? Is there a negotiation? Do we have the right to decline it be on our property?
Well, so that, so the first hurdle in all of this, and the struggle that I think the Water and Sewer Commission is going to be faced with, is they have to get, they have to actually buy these properties. So it is, I think I've also heard the number being 16, that they need to fully, to fully sewer the island, and they will have to acquire each of these individually. So that, so you couldn't, they couldn't just take your property. They could, they could offer to buy a section of your property if your property could afford to lose the space. But they're going to have to individually acquire each one of these parcels. So nobody's going to have property taken from them to put a lift station on.
And we're talking, quite honestly, many years down the road, if I'm not mistaken. You know, we just don't have the money for sewer-ing the island anytime soon with everything else we got going on. But this is something that we need to plan for, knowing that we have to do it, knowing sea level rise is coming, is coming, is happening. Chris, wherever you're at, would you agree to that?
Yeah, we, you know, we've identified areas, just an area where these pump stations will go. And just like the mayor said, you know, not expected to expand the sewer system anytime soon. This is just the first hurdle that we need to get over. And it all started from the piece of property on 7th and Palm came up, and that was a site that was identified as a potential pump station site. And we thought that it would be good to acquire the property. Now, that's kind of what got this whole thing rolling. But, you know, until the island starts expanding, or we start expanding sewer on the island, we don't have any plans to build pump stations anywhere. This is just a mechanism that we need in place to be able to do that in the future.
Okay. Councilmember Streetman first, and then Councilmember Smith.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chris, a question for you. Is it fair to say that the technology with the lift stations, as we go forward, is just getting more and more refined? Should be a smaller footprint as we go forward? I mean, the technology that's being built now compared to the current lift stations we have, which are pretty massive, right, compared to what these new ones are going to be? It's fair to say, I would hope that it would be even better going forward.
A lot, most of the pump stations, the proposed pump stations, oh, a lot smaller than what you, like, everyone keeps referring to the pump station at the end of 29th and Waterway. That's one of our bigger pump stations that we don't have. There's one pump station that's bigger than that, and that is at the treatment plant itself. But they will be smaller, and they continue to make the odor control unit smaller. I'll remember when you went on the tour at Forest Trails, remember the one big, long box, white, long box? That was odor control that was put in in 2007. And then that kind of circular cylindrical one that was closer to the plant, that was one that was put in in 2012, and they treat the same amount of air volume. So just in that short amount of time, it probably reduced it half in size. So technology definitely will improve over time. And just like we talked about earlier, this could be, we don't even know how far out in the future it could be for us to expand the system.
Well, I remember that, but I also remember the Wild Dunes Treatment Facility even more for other reasons.
Yeah, yeah, the Wild Dunes, that odor control unit was put in right around 2000, and y'all definitely could tell the difference.
What odor control unit?
Councilmember Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to point out that, given what Douglas mentioned, that this is not going to be a case where the Water and Sewer Commission is going to be seizing land, but is going to have to negotiate. It's probably going to be very helpful for them to have more of a blanket approach to the zoning than having to come back on a case-by-case basis. So there seems to be some good wisdom there in taking this approach. And otherwise, just want to thank the Planning Commission and the Water and Sewer Commission for their work on this, along with Douglas. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Popson?
Yeah, I guess this question is to Chris or Douglas. I've installed lift stations in neighborhoods, and I've seen a ton of them. I don't know that I've ever came across one within a structure. To follow up on Councilman Bell's, is there any need? Am I missing something that we would have to put one with a structure around it, other than just the fencing and the landscaping?
We, we wouldn't build, we, most likely, there wouldn't be an instance where we would build a lift station that would be enclosed in a structure. I think that could be an option if it would blend into the neighborhood better, and I think that's why it was included in there. But all of our pump stations will be open just because they're, from a maintenance standpoint, it's a lot easier to work on, a lot easier to access, and a lot easier to hide with landscaping.
Yeah, I think, I think the structure was included in the list of possibilities. If they chose to do it, I think they felt like that would be the best mechanism to hide one of these, to basically put it in a little building.
Sure. But, I mean, if it's got a fence around it, it's landscaped well, you won't even know it's there.
Yeah, that's the ultimate goal, is just to have it blend in as good as we can within the neighborhood.
Okay, anyone else? Hearing none, moving on. Ordinance 2020-15, an ordinance to adopt the most recent flood insurance rate maps, create standards for new AO flood zones, and update existing language as required by SC DNR. Again, Director Carr, if you would take it away?
Okay, thank you, Mayor. So this one has been kind of a long time coming. There's been a lot of buzz and talk about the new flood maps for probably five, seven years, something like that. So this is finally the ordinance that gets enacted to make those new flood maps effective. And they would become effective January 29th, here of 2021. And they, so that's the really, that's the big accomplishment of these, of this ordinance, is it adopts that new set of maps. Second thing it does is these new maps have a, they have a new zone, an AO zone, which is considered a shallow zoning, I'm sorry, a shallow flooding flood zone. Under our current maps, we don't have any of those zones, so we don't have any standards in our code. This, this ordinance would create those standards, which we need to do because we'll not have them on the island. And the third thing that this ordinance achieves is the DNR reviews our flood ordinances every so often to just be sure that they're up to date and they're compliant with what the National Flood Insurance Program wants every community to have. So that's, there are some, what I would consider small editorial changes to the language of our existing code that are coming from the DNR. I would just say that if the city wants to continue to participate in the National Flood Insurance Program, which I think we definitely do, there's really not much choice in this matter. It is, it is something that we have to do to continue to participate. And that's all I have, Mayor.
Okay, questions? Hearing none. Do I hear a motion to adjourn this meeting so we can move into our city council, special city council meeting?
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor? Aye. Okay, moving on. Welcome, everyone. This is the Special Isle Palm City Council Meeting. Today is Tuesday, December 8, 2020, at approximately 6:04 PM. This is a virtual meeting again due to COVID-19 pandemic. We did not have any public comments. I'd like to call this meeting to order and acknowledge that both the press and the public were duly notified of this meeting in accordance with the Freedom of Information Act. The purpose of this meeting are, we get many purposes. And the first one, A, consideration of proclamation. But first, roll call, please. Nicole?
Councilmember Bell?
Here.
Councilmember Streetman?
Here.
Councilmember Pounds?
Here.
Councilmember Popson?
Here.
Councilmember Smith?
Here.
Councilmember Buchanan? Councilmember Ward?
Here.
Councilmember Moy?
Here.
Mayor Carroll?
Here.
You have a quorum?
Thank you very much. I'm sorry to ask you to do that twice.
No problem.
Making sure we go by the books. Okay, first, that purpose, consideration of proclamation, recognizing the career and contributions of Fire Chief Anne Marie Graham, and thanking her for her 35 years of service to the city of Isle Palms, congratulating her on her retirement, and wishing her well in this new chapter of life.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make this in form of a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Okay, before we go into vote, let me read the proclamation, and then we will have a vote. Look at those pictures. Aren't they great? Okay. Recognizing the career and contributions of Fire Chief Anne Marie Graham, and thanking her for her 35 years of service to the city of Isle Palms, congratulating her on her retirement, and wishing her well in this new chapter of her life. Whereas Chief Graham began her career with the City of Isle Palms Fire Department in July 9, 1985, as a full-time firefighter. And whereas Chief Graham was appointed as fire chief on May 24, 1994. And whereas Chief Graham was the first career female fire chief in the state of South Carolina. And whereas Chief Graham has dedicated herself to the highest standards of professionalism and excellence as a member of the City of Isle Palms Fire Department. And whereas during her tenure as fire chief, the department has continued to pursue the most rigorous operational standards resulting in the achievement of an ISO rating of one, which is the best possible rating and represents how well-protected a community is by their fire department. Whereas Chief Graham always strived to protect the health and safety of all personnel, putting their needs above her own. And whereas Chief Graham's service and dedication to the City of Isle Palms and its fire department have proven to be an invaluable asset to the city and its residents. And now therefore be proclaimed by the City of the Isle Palms on behalf of the citizens we serve, in recognition of Chief Graham's exceptional service and her 35-year career and commitment to public safety and protection and service to the residents and businesses of the City of Isle Palms as a member of the fire department. Do hereby congratulate Chief Anne Marie Graham on the occasion of her retirement, December 31, 2020. We wish the fire chief the very best in this new chapter of her life, done this eighth day of December 2020 in the City of Isle Palms. Let's have a roll call vote, please.
Absolutely. Councilmember Bell?
Absolutely.
Councilmember Streetman?
Aye.
Councilmember Pounds?
Aye.
Councilmember Buchanan?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye, and well done.
Councilmember Popson?
100% aye.
Councilmember Ward?
Aye.
Councilmember Moy?
Aye, thank you, Chief.
Mayor Carroll?
Extremely well done, aye.
All in favor?
Thank you very much. Moving on. Consideration of nominations and appointments in committees for 2021. I believe everyone has the sheet in front of them. City Council Mayor, of course, Jimmy Carroll may have proclaimed will be appointed during our first council meeting. Ways and Means Committee is all council members. Both the Chair and Vice Chair will be nominated during that meeting. Public Safety Committee, members Jimmy Ward, Philip Pounds, Randy Bell. Public Works Committee, Rusty Streetman, Susan Hill Smith, Jimmy Ward. Recreation Committee, Susan Hill Smith, Ryan Buchanan, Philip Pounds. Personnel Committee, John Moy, Ryan Buchanan, Randy Bell. Real Property Committee, Kevin Popson, Rusty Streetman, and John Moy. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Moy?
Aye.
Councilmember Ward?
Aye.
Councilmember Buchanan?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Popson?
Aye.
Councilmember Pounds?
Aye.
Councilmember Streetman?
Aye.
Councilmember Bell?
Aye.
Mayor Carroll?
Aye.
All in favor?
Thank you very much. Consideration of nomination and appointment to the Carter Board of Directors. James Ward. A motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Councilmember Bell?
Aye.
Councilmember Streetman?
Aye.
Councilmember Pounds?
Aye.
Councilmember Buchanan?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Popson?
Aye.
Councilmember Ward?
Aye.
Councilmember Moy?
Aye.
Mayor Carroll?
Aye.
All in favor?
Thank you very much. Moving on. Consideration of nomination and appointment to Charleston Business Bureau, Susan Hill Smith. Councilmember Ward?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to nominate John Moy?
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
So this is, okay, we have a motion and a second discussion. Councilmember Smith?
I fully support Councilmember Moy being our representative to the CVB.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Smith. I believe that you and Councilmember Moy had a discussion outside, and I appreciate y'all's working together. That shows camaraderie, and I thank y'all very much. Roll call?
Councilmember Moy?
Aye.
Councilmember Ward?
Aye.
Councilmember Buchanan?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Popson?
Aye.
Councilmember Bell?
Aye.
Councilmember Streetman?
Aye.
Councilmember Ward?
Aye, again.
Oh, I'm sorry. Councilmember Pounds?
That's right, you missed me, what the chaps?
Makes up for it, yeah. Councilmember Pounds, I'm sorry.
Aye.
Mayor Carroll?
Aye.
All in favor?
Thank you very much. Jimmy, we don't miss you. We know you there. Moving on. Consideration, nomination, and appointment to Charleston, Berthley, Dorchester Council of Governments, Councilmember Philip Pounds. Do I hear a motion?
Motion approved.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call?
Councilmember Bell?
Aye.
Councilmember Streetman?
Aye.
Councilmember Pounds?
Aye.
Councilmember Popson?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith? Councilmember Buchanan?
Aye.
Councilmember Ward?
Aye.
Councilmember Moy?
Aye.
Mayor Carroll?
Aye.
All in favor?
Thank you very much. Moving on. Consideration of appointments to boards and commissions recommended by the Personnel Committee. First, planning commission, two-year terms expire 12/31/2022. The three names, David Cohen, Stephen Cormier, and Sandy Stone. Do I hear a motion?
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call?
Councilmember Pounds?
Aye.
Councilmember Streetman?
Aye.
Councilmember Bell?
Aye.
Councilmember Popson?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Buchanan?
Aye.
Councilmember Ward?
Aye.
Councilmember Moy?
Aye.
Mayor Carroll?
Aye.
All in favor?
Thank you very much. Moving on. Accommodations Tax Advisory Committee, three-year terms expire 12/31/2022. Thank you very much. Moving on, Accommodations Tax Advisory Committee, three-year terms expire twelve thirty-one twenty twenty-three. Ray Burns, Julie Bell, and Doug Tressler. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none. Well, I'm sorry, Councilmember Ward.
If I remember correctly, sir, these people that are nominated and eventually approved, they bring some individual expertise to the committee. Is that correct?
That is correct.
I was wondering if I might ask Mr. Moy, which levels of expertise do these three nominees meet?
Sure. The ATAX as a state regulated body that we are mandated to have has specific roles or specific experience levels that individuals must meet. So it's actually a statutory requirement that we have to satisfy. There are several open-ended wild cards, if you will, that also exist. I'll actually have to, I think, lean on the staff to help me.
It's okay. You just get back to me later.
Yeah, the short answer to your question, or rather maybe at the heart of your question, we are fulfilling all of our statutory requirements with.
Right. Well, I knew we'd have that for many years, but I was just wondering. I know there's like tourism, some from the arts.
Hospitality, cultural.
Cultural, yeah. Okay, yeah, I'll just get with you later on then.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bell.
Aye.
Councilmember Popson.
Aye.
Councilmember Streetman.
Aye.
Councilmember Smith.
Aye.
Councilmember Pounds.
Aye.
Councilmember Buchanan.
Aye.
Councilmember Moy.
Aye.
Councilmember Ward.
Aye.
Mayor Carroll.
Aye.
All in favor?
Thank you very much. Last one is the Board of Zoning Appeals, a three-year term expires twelve thirty-one twenty-three, Brian Abel. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Councilmember Moy, is that discussion?
Yeah, I just want to make one comment on all of these appointments, just really briefly, that it's an incredibly humbling position to make these recommendations when you look at the qualifications and experience of all of the individuals applying for these openings. I joked with, I shouldn't say I joked, I reflected to the committee that you look at the resumes of the folks who are applying to be in these positions and you ask yourself, what have I done with my life? They've done so much and they bring so much to the table. And these are incredibly difficult decisions, not because we don't have anybody showing interest, but rather we have so many qualified, incredible individuals trying to serve their community. So I mostly want to say thank you to everybody who's applied, everyone who's served in the past and is serving in the future.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Ward.
Mr. Abel, is it the same Mr. Abel that used to be on council? Or someone else?
He lives in Mount Pleasant.
Oh, he does?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And Mr. Moy, you stole my thunder in closing that, but very job well done. Thank you for saying that because we did have a lot of great qualified people and it was actually kind of hard to go through them all to pick out them. So again, great job for everybody. Roll call.
Councilmember Ward.
Aye.
Councilmember Moy.
Aye.
Councilmember Buchanan.
Aye.
Councilmember Smith.
Aye.
Councilmember Popson.
Aye.
Councilmember Bell.
Aye.
Councilmember Streetman.
Aye.
Councilmember Pounds.
Aye.
Mayor Carroll.
Aye.
All in favor?
Thank you very much. The next one's going to be a lot of discussion, I guarantee. G, consideration appointment of a city attorney, James. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Second. Discussion. Well, I can tell you, you know, we love having Julia, but it's great to have Jim Henchy with us because he brings a wealth of knowledge and actually good humor with us too because he smiles watching us. So and the expertise he brings, I can't say enough about him. He was a neighbor of mine for many years on Sullivan's Own. So any other discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Pounds.
Aye.
Councilmember Streetman.
Aye.
Councilmember Bell.
Aye.
Councilmember Popson.
Aye.
Councilmember Smith.
Aye.
Councilmember Buchanan.
Aye.
Councilmember Moy.
Aye.
Councilmember Ward.
Aye.
Mayor Carroll.
Aye.
All in favor?
Thank you very much. Congratulations, Jim.
Thank you.
Moving on, we've already had our public hearing. Now it is the second reading where we're going to vote. Consideration, second reading ordinance twenty twenty-ten, amendment to the city zoning ordinance to allow sewer pump stations in the SR one single residential district. Do I hear a motion?
Motion. Make a motion, we approve.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Yes, Desiree.
Just a recommendation that the motion to approve be of the ordinance as amended.
As amended.
Okay. As amended. Motion to approve as amended.
Second.
Thank you for keeping it straight. Any other questions? Councilmember Bell.
Yeah, just further question. You know, these are areas that have been identified. It's a longer-term plan. So we don't know, does this not make it fairly ripe for water and sewer to begin the process of going after vacant lots at this point, right? The impetus here is for the triangular lot, right? So that's the trigger for bringing this forward early. So I'm a resident with a vacant lot next to me in one of these zones. Is it sort of anticipated that, and I don't want to use the term land grab, but I will for lack of something else, the ease of going after vacant lots compared to the ease of going after a portion of a person's property? You know, short of eminent domain, right? I don't think, you know, as this goes before Boza and needs to be done five years out or whenever, just feels kind of right that, you know, we're setting precedent now to start going after selected areas of the community without a comprehensive sewer plan. And, you know, I am an absolute proponent of a comprehensive plan and getting people off a septic, but we still have many unanswered questions like the funding for those already on sewer versus those who are duly incented right now to remain on their septic system. So I have to say for me, I still have a lot of concerns without a comprehensive plan. And by the way, not in the term of our comprehensive plan, but just an overall plan for sewer-ing the island.
Thank you, Councilmember Bell. I concur with a lot of what you're saying. I think one of the things they were talking about before is not to exceed a thousand square feet. And, you know, our minimum lot size now is thirty-five thousand square feet, but the average lot in Alapalms, the smaller lots are probably twelve thousand five hundred square feet. And so we're talking about a small portion. And I think if we go back to the eight different criteria, I think the neighbors would have to agree not to be, you know, adversely affected. Am I correct in saying that, Douglas?
Well, it would, you know, it ultimately would be the judgment of the five members of the Board of Zoning Appeals as to whether or not they felt that there was a substantial enough claim that they would be adversely impacted. You know, I think, so it wouldn't be the neighbor's judgment. It would ultimately be the Board of Zoning Appeals collectively, their judgment as to whether or not those eight criteria were met.
Okay. Yes, Desiree.
Yeah, I just wanted to add that there is, there is a master plan, a sewer master plan that was developed about two years ago. The city and the Water and Sewer Commission participated in the funding of that plan. And that plan has pretty much, you know, decided or identified the locations of where these sewer pump stations would be. They're not exactly identified, but there is a, there is a very detailed and comprehensive document that was developed in partnership between the two organizations for the, for, you know, for creating a roadmap of what it would look like or what it would take for the city to pursue sewer-ing the island.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Jay Lee here.
Jay, let's hear from Ryan, then we'll come back to you.
All right.
Ryan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think one of the roadblocks for the Water and Sewer Commission moving forward was, I mean, just the fact that even though they have the plan laid out, they didn't have the ability to, you know, utilize the property available. Had it come available, if there was a vacant lot within those areas and this will make it available, it could be, you know, within so many block area, I suppose, and allows them to put together a better focused plan on what needs to be done in order to develop the infrastructure to sewer the island. Like I said, it comes back to us, you know, in making these appointments to these committees and putting the appropriate people in there who are going to make the best interest and make the best decisions for the residents of the island as well.
Thank you. Okay, Alapalms Water and Sewer Commission Director Jay Lee.
I just wanted to reiterate Desiree's position. I was going to say the same thing, that there was a master plan. And for your information, we are going to Columbia on Friday to meet with the DEHEC to find out what their long-range plan might be, if they have one, relative to septic systems on Barrier Island and Sea Island properties or Sea Island communities. So that'll be a wealth of information when we get with them on Friday.
Councilmember Smith.
I'll just chime in and say that I believe, as I mentioned earlier, that this will be a more nimbler, allow the Water and Sewer Commission to be more nimble and flexible in making these things happen by having a more blanket approach to the zoning than on a single cases and case-by-case basis. And that, you know, we need to think about the greater good and we need to be conveying that message to the greater community. And also there are going to be forums, they won't be coming to us, complaints won't be coming to city council. They'll be, but they can be addressed through Boza and through the Water and Sewer Commission.
Thank you. Anyone else? Comments? I'm going to throw out a quick one. You know, I know of several on Ocean Boulevard surrounded by really expensive homes and they're not affected at all. There's no odors, anything. I mean, there's no complaint that I know of. There's also one on Palm Boulevard down about four hundred blocks. So again, I think the Water and Sewer Commission has done a great job and and who knows, as they said before, what's going to happen in five, ten, fifteen years? Anyone else? Hearing none. Nicole?
Councilmember Ward.
Aye.
Councilmember Moy.
Aye.
Councilmember Buchanan.
Aye.
Councilmember Smith.
Aye.
Councilmember Popson.
Aye.
Councilmember Bell.
Aye.
Councilmember Streetman.
Aye.
Councilmember Pounds.
Aye.
Mayor Carroll.
Aye.
All in favor?
Thank you very much. Moving on, consideration, second reading ordinance twenty twenty fifteen, an ordinance to adopt the most recent flood insurance rate maps, create standards for new AO flood zones, and update existing language as required by SCDNR. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. Discussion? Real quickly, Douglas, if I'm not mistaken, we have the maps online, do we not?
Yes, I think we do. Well, I know we do. There's a tool on the city's website at iop.net, and if you type in flood maps, there's a tool the county developed that allows you to type in your address, see the existing flood zone, and then also see the proposed flood zone.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? I guess I'm allowed two times to say something. As Douglas said before, I don't think we have a choice in this. So anyway, Nicole, roll call vote, please.
Absolutely. Councilmember Pounds.
Aye.
Councilmember Streetman.
Aye.
Councilmember Popson.
Aye.
Councilmember Bell.
Aye.
Councilmember Smith.
Aye.
Councilmember Buchanan.
Aye.
Councilmember Moy.
Aye.
Councilmember Ward.
Aye.
Mayor Carroll.
Aye.
All in favor?
Thank you very much. Next item, consideration of an award of a contract in amount of twenty-one thousand five hundred for Evergreen Solutions for a wage and compensation study. Councilmember Moy, would you like to add anything on this?
Sure, I'll make a, well, you want to make a motion and then I'll make a motion to approve.
Yes, sir. Second question, you guys second.
All right, and now I'll give my, a brief, I'm going to hand it over to Desiree very quickly here. But as you all know, the Personnel Committee and the staff have been going through an RFP process to conduct a wage and compensation study. This is somewhat long overdue. And as we all also know, that our personnel and staff is our largest budget item. This is a very important thing for us to get right. And so the staff has put in a ton of due diligence in terms of vetting the different organizations that apply to this RFP, and there were a lot, and they were all, there was a lot of highly qualified, really good organizations. And overall, we were very pleased with the interest that we received for the study. And I want to assure the rest of council that we wanted to emphasize not just, hey, give us a number of what is a competitive rate, but rather give us those numbers and help us come up with a plan of how do we implement it within the context of our setting, with our budget, with everything that's going on, help us develop an action plan for implementing and ensuring that everyone in our, in our family, on our staff is compensated fairly and competitively so that we can continue attracting and retaining really great people like all of the staff members we have present here. So Desiree, I'm going to hand it off to you to add more grace and eloquence to what I just tried to say.
That's difficult coming out for you, but I guess what I will add is, yes, we went through a very thorough process with the RFP. We're very happy with the amount of response that we received. We interviewed and spent quite some time talking to these folks and it really came down to this company based on their experience in our region. They have done similar work for Berkeley County, Charleston County, Dorchester County, the town of Mount Pleasant, Monk's Corner, you know, a lot of our neighbors. And we felt like they'd really handled on the region and the challenges that we face in the Charleston region. And they've also, outside of our region in the state of South Carolina, they have a lot of experience in dealing with communities that deal with the same seasonality challenges that we do and the fact that, you know, oftentimes having employees have to drive long distances to come to work just because of the cost of living within the within the community that we serve. So we felt very confident in the work that they're going to do for us. And like Councilmember Moy expressed earlier, you know, there's a lot of emphasis in the implementation phase and the implementation plan. And that was something that we really wanted everybody who was applying for this work to understand that we just have to be sensitive to the realities, our budget realities and the challenges that we, you know, face this year and potentially will continue to face in terms of revenue and expenses. And we feel confident that this is, this is going to be the right company to do. Everybody who applies was very, you know, highly competent and we felt like they were highly qualified, but just the fact that these folks have so much experience with the region that we are made us feel even more comfortable moving forward with them. So this is the first wage and compensation study that the city has done formally like this in about twenty years, so certainly well overdue. And we're looking forward to, you know, going through this process and involving the staff and council as we go along.
Very well. Anyone else? Councilmember Ward.
Okay, Desiree, you mentioned we had another conversation study done about twenty years ago. I wasn't on council at that time, but I had to be franking out front. And all I've heard is nightmare stories about that compensation study and that the wages and the compensation came in much higher than our city could afford the budget and, you know, several other major problems with it. And talking with other council members that came before this council, you know, you mentioned that conversation study and they rolled their eyes and shake their head and saying it was a bad, sad chapter in in the city's, the city's life. And I was just wondering, I'm sure y'all are aware of that. And just tell me how this study is going to be different.
Well, I, I wasn't here when-
Neither was I.
Eight years ago, when this was done, I've heard, I've heard the stories. I, I do think that there are very practical and sensible ways that we can do to mitigate what those concerns were. Part, one is, one of them is to make sure that city council is involved throughout the process. And the other, my other priority with this whole process is to ensure that the data could be validated, and that they have a methodology that is, is proven and defensible as to, you know, what they're using to come up with these numbers. So they were able to explain and show to us the process that they follow, how they validate the information that they use, and, you know, there's always concerns about what those numbers are gonna come back at, certainly. I think that, again, focusing on an implementation plan and prioritization, prioritization of that implementation plan will be key.
Let me ask you one other question, if I may, my second time to speak. What if the compensation comes in much higher than we, we can possibly, their recommendations come in much higher? Like, the bottom line is, their recommendations for compensation across the board, from top to bottom, entire city, comes in higher than we can afford? And this gets published, and people within the different departments see these numbers. Are you aware, I'm sure you are aware, and John is, John Moy is aware too, of the danger of that? What's your response?
I, I'll speak first, if you don't mind.
Sure.
There's, I, I've got two responses. Number one, the fact that it would be egregiously over, frankly, it, it should not be a concern. We don't have a retention problem right now, and it's not like people don't, like, our, the staff don't know what they could be making elsewhere. And so if we were severely underpaying our staff compared to rates elsewhere, we would have a major retention problem right now, which we don't. So that's, my, my first point is, I don't think that should be the major concern here. Now, there's still a concern that the, the budget's going to increase. I mean, anytime we do a wage and compensation study, the likelihood isn't that they're gonna come back and say, oh, you know what, you're paying more than the competitive rate. That's the least likely scenario that, that we're gonna face. And so your point is still well-made, that it's likely that rates are gonna come, come back in some areas higher than what we're currently paying. And for us, that's where the ongoing work alongside city council and the implementation plan are really important, because the, the way in which this organization's gonna roll out a plan, they're not gonna just say, here's your report, these, these positions need to be paid 20% higher, and that's it, there it is. It's rather gonna be, here's, here's your plan for continuing to create a competitive workforce through wages, benefits, and all of the other things that you offer that make the Isle of Palms a great place to work.
Councilmember Streaton?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of things. I, I think, number one, in regards to the wage and compensation study, and I think we as council, this current council, and hopefully council moving forward, will make the commitment to take the plan, take it seriously, weave it into our greater strategic plan that we're gonna have in place at some point here pretty soon, and, and work towards making sure we're equitable in all areas. You know, in, in the corporate world, I've been involved with many wage and compensation studies over the 40 years I was in the business, and it's never perfect. I mean, you, you know, it's, it's, it's not something that you go in there and you just take what, what's given to you, and you say, okay, we can do this immediately tomorrow. You have to have a plan put together, a thoughtful plan, you work towards it, you get people to buy in, and at all levels, and if it's communicated correctly, and not just do it and then walk away, which I think must have happened in that current, that past plan, that it was just done and then they just walked away from it, that's not the right thing to do. That's not the way we ought to be addressing it. So that's the way I see it, and I think that we have the beginnings here, you know, being on the Personnel Committee, I, I feel good about the beginnings we have here to get a good workable plan in place, or a good, you know, good recommendation that we could put a plan together and weave it into our strategic plan moving forward. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Bell?
Councilman Streaton stole most of what I was gonna say. I've never been involved when, when we didn't do compensation studies periodically, and certainly they've always been a part of strategic planning. I think the concerns that people have generally are, you go through these compensation studies, it's, oh no, they're going to lower my pay, right? I've never exited a compensation study with everybody 100% happy, but I think one of the things that we need to think about, I, I think most that have had a lot of employees, you generally, your, your mass exodus is not usually a consequence of pay. It's, it's a consequence of leadership and recognition and overall environment. And, you know, it's up to us to create an environment that people want to work here. You know, small variances in pay won't be the reason that people choose to not come to work or stay at work at the Isle of Palms, and, and frankly, I think this council's done a pretty good job to make a good work environment. And, and part of that's listening and addressing, and I've said it since I've been on council prescriptively, we have problems, right? We don't have a broad-based compensation problem. We need to understand where we have problems, and weave that into our strategic thought, and make sure everyone understands this is a positive exercise, it's not intended to be a negative exercise.
Anyone else? I'm gonna add just a couple quickies. You know, we're a unique community, we're a coastal community, most of our employees can't afford to live out here on the beach, so it requires travel time for them to get here. As I think one of y'all, I think Councilmember Moy said, we are pretty competitive, but at the same time, you know, somebody coming from Hanahan or Somerville, that takes time, and there is a little bit of traffic between here and there. So we do have to be somewhat competitive, and we don't have to do it all at one time if it is a, a major difference. It can be done in increments. So, does it make sense, anybody else before we?
I just want to say that, just as a reminder, although we haven't had a, a comprehensive wage and compensation study in about 20 years, whenever we, we have faced some challenges with, you know, some, several departments, we have looked at it individually, and we have made some adjustments to address, you know, some of the turnover that we, that we have seen, and, and oftentimes is associated with the police and fire department. And we have made those adjustments, we have addressed those, those challenges, so I do not have any major concerns about, you know, the results of this compensation study coming back and being completely different than what we currently have. There's certainly gonna be adjustments need to be made, but I feel like if we were way below market, we would be having more of a personnel and a turnover issue than, than, you know, what we have. And luckily, the city has been blessed with a workforce that is, is here for the long run. I mean, we have long-tended employees, and I think that speaks to the community, that speaks to the workplace, and that speaks to, you know, the competitiveness of, of, of what the city provides. So I'm, I'm excited about this, I know the employees are, and I, I hope that, you know, we come out of it with a, a very, a, a good, workable and implementable work product.
Thank you for saying that, Desiree, because again, here we are doing a proclamation for Chief Graham after 35 years, and we've got somebody at our Public Works Department that's going on 40 years. So I mean, that says a lot for a community and its, its employees, our family, our city family. Okay, anyone else? Hearing none? Nicole?
Councilmember Pounds?
Aye.
Councilmember Streetman?
Aye.
Councilmember Bell?
Aye.
Councilmember Popson?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Buchanan?
Aye.
Councilmember Moy?
Aye.
Councilmember Ward?
Aye.
Mayor Carroll?
Aye.
All in favor?
Thank you very much. Okay, last in our agenda is executive session. We do have two items that we need to go to executive session on. The first one, executive session pursuant to section 30-470A2, to receive legal advice regarding settlement proposal from Morgan Creek Grill. Upon returning to open session, council may take action on matters discussed in the executive session. The other item, same section, section 30-470A2, to receive legal update regarding the eviction proceeding against Paddle Wave Water Sports. Again, upon returning to open session, council may take action on matters discussed in the executive session. Do I hear a motion?
I make a motion that we go into executive session to discuss these matters.
Second.
Second.
Do we need to do them individually?
I think we do this together.
Yeah, we just need to have them listed, so you will be talking about those two, just those two issues.
Just those two issues. Okay, Nicole, roll call?
Councilmember Ward?
Aye.
Councilmember Moy?
Aye.
Councilmember Buchanan?
Aye.
Oh no, screen shifted. Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Popson?
Aye.
Councilmember Pounds?
Aye.
Councilmember Bell?
Aye.
Councilmember Streetman?
Aye.
Mayor Carroll?
Aye.
All in favor? I think I got everybody.
Thank you very much. To our, to our public, please excuse us, we have to do this behind closed doors. We will come back, and thank y'all all for participating and watching us tonight. I'll see everybody on the other side.
Yes, we'll come back to this one after executive session in the event the council takes any action. So I'll have a, a different login for the executive session, we'll join that one now.
Thank you. Thank you.[1270.58]
All right, we are coming out of executive session now and just as a reminder, we are still live on YouTube. The time is currently 7:38.
Ron, I just re-spent the link everyone so that they can access it quickly, so we may have to wait for a few. Mayor, you have a quorum, so you may wanna, if you want, you can go ahead, and you're muted, by the way.
Jimmy, you're muted.
We are back on, we're coming out of executive session, no decisions were made. We received our legal advice, and do we have any motions coming out of executive session?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion that we advise our council to proceed with negotiations and accept the settlement as proposed.
For who?
On the Morgan Creek Grill.
Second.
End of discussion. Here and none. Nicole or Desiree will call.
I'll go ahead and do the roll call. Councilmember Moy.
Aye.
Councilmember Powell.
Aye.
Councilmember Smith.
Aye.
Councilmember Ward.
Aye.
Councilmember Popson.
Aye.
Councilmember Bell.
Aye.
Councilmember Streedman.
Aye.
Councilmember Buchanan. You're muted.
Aye.
Thank you. Mayor Carroll.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, I believe that's it. Do I hear a motion for adjournment?
Motion adjourn.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Merry Christmas, everybody.
Unanimous adjournment, all right.
Happy holidays.
Thank you.